Good morning. I'd like to call this work session of the Southampton Town Board to order on this 10th day of November 2022. Please rise, prepare, and join us for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of Japan, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
As we see it, now, clerk, will you please call the board?
Certainly. Supervisor Schneiderman.
Here.
Councilwoman McNamara.
Here.
Councilman Martel.
Here.
Councilman Bouvier.
Here.
Councilwoman Skewell.
I'm here as well.
It's the first time we've agreed.
Did I just make a little splash?
Is anybody present?
You're not present.
I'm always present.
You are a present, you are all of us.
A present.
All right, we are...
Present is available.
All right, we're going to start today with a conversation about the Hampton Bays Hamlet Center update. We are joined by Janice Shearer, our town planning and development administrator, and representatives from Historical Concepts, consultants, and what is this?
Oh, that's for later.
Okay, put this aside, that's for later. All right, so, good morning.
Good morning.
Nice to see you folks. As the board is aware, we have contracted with Historical Concepts to help us with this visioning process for downtown Hampton Bays, trying to figure out what the future would be if we don't change the zoning and leave it the way it is, as well as adjusting the zoning to match the community's vision for how it wants its future to unfold. So with that, Janice, I'll turn it to you.
Thank you.
In terms of where we are.
Great. Good morning, Mr. Supervisor, members of the board. I am joined today by Elizabeth Dillon and Paul Knight from Historical Concepts. Some board members may remember that Historical Concepts was with us early on. They did the pattern book. We understand that all that is sort of ouch with the form-based code, but there was some background information. So starting over and having starting points, there's still some valuable information that you would want to know about in order to move forward, and that includes what Supervisor just said, is the as-of-right zoning, sort of what you can do. We did it as a mathematical calculation in the secret documents from before, but we've never actually laid it out and said, okay, here's exactly what, you know, and if we added the parking and what it would be under today's zoning. We did a form-based code which gave pathways, and as you know, you can lead a horse to water, but you can't make a drink. Like, you can provide a pathway to someone and they may or may never take that pathway. They may or may never avail themselves to certain parts of the codes, but we allow them in a bigger picture.
Well, generally, there hasn't been a lot of investment into downtown based on current zoning.
That's right. And so you'll see, and I'm going to let them do the talking, is just sort of like where we were, at least to give you a refreshed starting point, and also the as-of-right analysis, the higher level, like, sort of layout that they've just done, just to, you know, start informing it. So with that, I'll turn it over to Elizabeth.
Thanks, Janice. Elizabeth Dillon, Paul Knight. We work for the company called Historical Concepts. We're based in Atlanta, but we are both in our New York office. We do architecture and planning. We worked here almost exactly six years ago, starting the processes Janice mentioned. You know, we understand kind of starting over, but I think it's worth looking back at the legwork that was done previously and how we got here and kind of using that as the sprinting off point. So that's why we're here today. So we have a PowerPoint presentation. You should all have hard copies as well. Not used to having it behind me, so sorry. I'm looking sideways here. So this is really just an overview of the process that we went through previously as we were drafting the pattern book. We did a pretty extensive public engagement process. We started, you know, as we approach architecture and planning, our approach is always precedent-based design. So we started with a data gathering phase. You can see the first bar up there, you know, meeting with the town and stakeholders that had been identified in Hampton Bays. You know, we met with...
The stakeholders were the property owners and business owners and community members.
Property owners, yep. You know, the town supervisor at that point, the Hampton Bay Civic Association, the school district, the beautification association, the Chamber of Commerce. So a number of organizations, just to get feedback. We, you know, we, Paul will speak in a minute, but we did what we call a precedent tour, looking at towns on the East End and how they have developed over time. And then we also held public meetings. We had an online survey. We took all that feedback. We kind of came back to a public meeting, also to the town board, presented those findings, kind of summarized our takeaways and what we saw as a goal that we heard from the public, and then the tool that we had been hired at that point to create was the pattern book. And so how we were going to synthesize what we had heard from the public and what the goals of the pattern book were, we actually developed the pattern book and came back. So that was, as I mentioned, almost exactly six years ago when we were embarking on this process.
And so the pattern book also was a way so someone who wanted to invest in downtown could understand what people wanted. Is that their...
Yeah, I mean, the goal was really, we did not come in with a predetermined, you know, idea of what the pattern book would be or a plan. That's, you know, we start every project with a blank sheet of paper.
So we have an hour for this conversation, and there's still been a lot of learning that this board has been undergoing. There was a big meeting at the high school that the civic held. I've been holding listening sessions for a month now. They have about 100 people at each one. They usually go on for three hours, four hours.
It's great that you're getting that much engagement.
Sometimes we're doing a community, inter-community written survey. We're doing some focus groups starting today. Lots of people have signed up for it. And some of the things that seem to keep coming up is, well, where is the downtown?
Yeah.
Right? So in this, the downtown has certain boundaries, whereas, you know, the community seems to believe that the downtown sort of goes from the diner at Route 24 to Carvel, which is...
Yeah.
So it's a little bit bigger than that area.
This was just like, you know, you could take that pattern book and sort of apply it elsewhere along the corridor, but the whole point was, of the goals before, were to look at this specific area. And now what they're doing right now is even condensing it even smaller and actually just looking at it from the north side of Montauk Highway to the park. So that's what we're doing right now.
And my own observations is sort of, there's this clash of zoning.
Yeah, we're going to...
The pre-zoning that looks like downtown and the new zoning that looks like a bypass. And so Montauk Highway is both a bypass and a Main Street, and that's part of the problem.
Yes.
And so you have these, the clash of these two zonings, you know, development that looks like it's highway, you know, bypass type of development, and downtown development close to that crossroads of Pon Quad and Main Street, you know, Montauk Highway. So and we've looked at, you know, other areas that could get developed there, is that are sort of prime for new development, but also how do you take the old development and what opportunities are there? So it's, you know, I've learned a lot in terms of what some of the community's concerns are about traffic, about density, about height, about gentrification. There's lots of different types of issues. But I'm happy to share that as we go.
And that's a big part of why we're here, because we want to listen to, you know, the kind of recent developments and the feedback that you're hearing now as well.
So I'm a little bit concerned that we're going to spend too much time going over what we have done, and we'll run out of time to talk about where to go.
We are happy to talk as we go. We also were planning to click through these slides fairly quickly, just to give an overview.
Because I think we're pretty familiar with, you know, the massing and, you know, the architectural styles and all of that.
Yeah.
I'm not sure the public was that familiar with what we had approved. It was basically a style. It was more about feel and style.
Yeah, and the presentation we prepared here really was not focused so much on the pattern book itself. We did bring some copies of that in case somebody wanted to reference, but it was really going back more to the previous document, the data gathering that we had done and kind of the summary of what we had heard. And so that was kind of the crux of this, what we had heard, you know, what vision...
So we're trying to rectify what they had already heard and what you're hearing now. That's kind of what we're trying to do. We're trying to say, well, we had 1,200 people tell us this. We have a complaint and things telling us that. You're hearing new information, so we're trying to synthesize all this information together, and that's what is happening here.
There seems to be some general consensus about a new road that would open up the park to Main Street, and I'm hoping that you guys could help us envision what that road could look like based on what the community is addressing in terms of what they want it to look like.
Yeah.
Address some of the issues. So to give us sort of a sense of if we did nothing, what downtown will look like?
Yeah.
And if we were to put some of these guidelines in place.
I'm interested in the history of our outreach, if it's okay, you know, and if it's okay with you, Supervisor.
Yeah.
Because I know there's extensive history. We didn't just make this up. This was community input, and I think it has a place here. So this isn't going to take too long, right?
No, we'll run through these quickly. We'll kind of abbreviate. We're talking about just to make sure we have time. So I'll let Paul just speak for a couple minutes about, you know, the data gathering phase.
Yeah, so as architects and city planners, we think a lot about lots of blocks and streets and buildings and heights and sort of physical infrastructure of towns. And so we went through 18 of, you know, some of the great towns on Long Island, and actually went with our tape measures and measured these things to see, okay, what, how big are the streets? How tall are the buildings? How frequent are the street fronts? How big are the blocks?
So for each of those towns, you saw the map. You know, we've kind of prepared an analysis for reference for this stuff.
Yeah, so all those towns you went to physically?
Yes.
And one of those towns, we've been hearing a lot about, Sayville.
Sayville.
Yeah.
So you went there.
Okay, good.
And so from this analysis, we distilled, you know, a lot of this into the data gathering booklet, and that includes this document that shows, it's called a gnoli map of the plan. So basically, all the black squares you see are just building footprints. And so you can see Sayville on the bottom right there, and you can compare that, this is all at the same scale, to Hampton Bays at the top. And so Hampton Bays, that runs along Montauk Highway there.
And again, that's just the overlay district that was kind of predefined, just how we focused our set.
Yeah, that same area we're talking about now. Now we're even drilled in closer and not talking about the whole downtown overlay. But you're just talking about just the building frequency comparatively to these other locations.
Yeah, so in Hampton Bays, for example, we have a building density of about 1.1 buildings per acre, a facade frequency of one every 50 feet along Montauk Highway, and with a Main Street block of almost 1,200 feet long. But then if you compare that to all the other towns, you have numbers like building density of three per acre, or facade frequency of every 20 or 30 feet, or a block length of between 200 and 500 feet. So much tighter grained, more buildings, more front doors and storefronts in the exact same area.
More intersections.
And more intersections.
And so there...
Yeah, so those were really our takeaways. So, you know, we did that, broad strips, these diagrams, and kind of trying to distill down some quantifiable information to share. So then we use that. As I mentioned, we embarked on a more formal public engagement process. We held a work session in the senior center there in Hampton Bays where we actually broke out into small groups, and we did what we call a visual preference survey. So we looked at a lot of images. We asked focus questions to try to get an understanding for what sort of development the community members would be excited about. We also hosted an online survey. We got just over 1,200 responses to that. And so then we distilled all of that information here into the data gathering booklet. The overwhelming takeaway, you can see here, 93.5% of people wanted a vibrant, walkable, mixed-use, many options for shopping and restaurants, high pedestrian activity. That was kind of our overwhelming mandate, I'll say. You know, that was, it's unusual that you get that many people in agreement. You can see people wanted development to be of a traditional character, but they wanted some variety. They didn't want it to feel contrived or prescriptive. They wanted it to feel like there were some natural variations that maybe had developed over time. We had, through that survey, we had people self-identify towns that they thought were good examples for development that they would want to strive for. The two overwhelming examples that came forward at that time were Sag Harbor and Southampton. You know, as we mentioned, Sayville, it seems like is kind of one of the preferred examples at this point. We also studied that. So we heard all that feedback. We synthesized that again into this more detailed booklet. But you can see, again, you know, 500, 600 people agreeing on, you know, kind of the architectural, you know, streetscape character that they wanted to see in town. So that, you know, we really took that as the definition of what the community wanted to see in terms of development. So then we stepped back, as we talked about, and now we've looked at, well, what is permitted currently?
Right. And just before you get into that, I just want to say, this is, again, we have to have a logical starting point, and any starting point would be the as-of-right yield technically. What could someone do? We typically, I just don't want anyone to think the town is now doing this and that. We are just looking rationally at what could someone possibly, you know, what's the likelihood of them coming down to planning and putting in an application, and they did like three different development scenarios. Of course, we're not endorsing them necessarily. We're just looking at what could you do. So I just wanted to preface that.
And in that, you're sort of focusing on the areas that are vacant or largely vacant.
Yes, and I think it's important.
Because, you know, in this section of downtown, you know, they're pretty much built out according to zoning. I don't know like that the 7-Eleven property could add more development to the Chase property or the Liggett's property. It's not one of Liggett's post offices. A lot of these things, you know, are fully built out.
So, yeah, so I think it needs to be recognized that the parcels on the north side, you know, we hear a lot of like, well, I like it the way it is. There's a lot of vacant, private...
About 12 acres.
12 acres of developable land, and then we preserve 38 acres that once was developable and now is public parkland. So it's 12 acres of private property that someone can develop because that's their, you know, rights.
They might have limited development now, like one store on a...
We're going to look at that. So we did, so I just want to preface this with, this isn't necessarily our, what we're looking to do. This is what you could do.
This is not a recommendation. It's just different options of what would be permitted.
I recall that we had, you know, there was some question of that, like, people thought, oh, we're going to tear things down and do that. These were options that were presented based on the studies that we did, in particular, some of the, what building owners could do over time.
Right.
And that's really what the preface was, and it somehow got missed.
And we're also looking at like, okay, well, if this is maxed out and there's a building there, well, then it's probably not going to get more, but it wouldn't get less, right? It would be what it is. So they kept it the same. So I'll let Paul go through that.
I wanted to clarify that, because I know in the next page, the focus is that area from Main Street to the park, but that's also because this is largely fully developed, this other section.
Yeah, we thought it would be more productive to focus on, you know, the aggregated parcels where somebody was actually likely to come in and propose development.
For new construction.
That's right.
But this part also is part of that overall, what you're able to do over time.
Yeah.
Because I remember we were concentrating a lot on that evolution. And, you know, so the zoning was to allow you to do certain things over time.
Yeah.
Whether the building owner wanted to do that or not, you know, expand access in between those buildings, if there was remodeling or not, all that kind of stuff.
Right, but this conversation is about the current zoning and what you could do. And all, the point I'm trying to make is that these parcels are probably maxed out, and some of them develop beyond what current zoning would even allow. So that's why I think the focus is on this area, which is largely open space.
Understood. I'm just, I'm talking about the evolution of this and the conversations we had back then.
And you're exactly right, that the goal of the pattern book and the form-based zoning was to kind of create a framework that could be filled in over time, not to do anything in one fell swoop or immediately.
So if they got redeveloped, they would look more harmonious to that vision, community vision, vibrancy.
And that really is the crux of it. The goal is to, you know, enhance and continue kind of the character that's already there. It's not dramatically to change it. It's really looking at all the good parts of Hampton Bays now, you know, the parts of the neighboring towns that people admire, and just trying to keep the character of Hampton Bays, but enhance it and make sure that future development is consistent with that character that people enjoy today.
Exactly. So we reviewed the existing code within the village business district and, you know, looking at things like 70% lot coverage and setbacks and the uses that are currently allowed, including residential apartments and multifamily businesses, including general merchandise stores and grocery stores, offices like real estate and accounting, and then also personal and recreational services like laundry and gyms and movie theaters. And so based on that, and then based on our study area between Montauk Highway and the park and that 12 acres of undeveloped land, we developed three different scenarios just to get a sense of what this land could yield under current zoning. And so I'll go through each of those now. So the first scenario, which we think is the most feasible, just given the way development is funded and occurs, is one that is largely single-story retail. And so in this case, we have these aggregated lots, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5 lots, where the, for example, the lot on the left could yield roughly 46,000 square foot, single-story commercial building, and then the majority of the remaining lot would have to be devoted to parking in order to meet those parking requirements. And so in these diagrams, the dark squares are the buildings, and then the...
I think is that 111?
On the left is 46,000 square feet.
If you look across the street at the existing kind of movie theater strip mall, it's about that same size.
Yeah, so it's about taking that...
He would have, there are three groups of 15s. So you have 15...
So you have party walls.
Yes.
And so you can aggregate them into a one, potentially.
Yeah, so all of these, we hit that 15,000 square foot max, but then they have to be divided up into party walls.
So you can see kind of the fainter line within the building footprint is, you know, essentially the party wall.
Can you do that? Share the rules? I thought the building itself...
You have to show like a yield map. What's been happening is people show like a yield map and say, we can get 15 and 15, and then they ask to aggregate them.
This across the street is exactly 15,000.
And we had started, you know, the first layout that we had looked at actually was individual buildings, because that was, you know, the initial reading code in reviewing with Janice and looking at the existing.
Also, what is permitted, I think, more realistic, is 40,000, and that's a shopping, like a grocery store. That's not the 15,000, it's not subject to the 15,000 restriction.
But in the use table, you can do, can you do grocery store?
Yes.
In VB?
Yes.
Okay.
So maybe we're 6,000, a little over, I would say. But I, you know, this was like holistically done by the architects. I didn't get in the middle of trying to review it like it was an applicant. So, yeah.
Are you allowed to do residential above the...
Yeah, we're going to get to that in a different option.
So, and we elevated this option in a quick little model study that you can see down below, just to get a sense of how, you know, that scale compares to what is existing. And again, this is just what is allowed as of right under current zoning.
And so you can see that this, in this version, which we think is, you know, the most likely to occur, given economic returns in our kind of current day development models, you know, the buildings, they require a lot of parking, and so it's not really contributing to improving the street experience. You can see in these two cases, we were able to pull the building to the street edge, so it's helping to hold the street a little bit, but because of the access and the parking, it's a small, you know, wall of frontage. It's not kind of creating that continuous wall of interesting engagement with the street that pedestrians would want. So it's really not contributing to what we heard the town, the Hamlet residents wanted.
And then in the next two scenarios is where we incorporated residential uses into it. So scenario two, under the SC 44 zoning, we could get 122 senior citizen housing units that are occupying like their own building. So it's, and scenario three is apartments above retail or commercial. But then in scenario two, it's you have separate buildings for a commercial building and then a separate one for the senior housing. And running through those examples as well. And similar to scenario one, like Elizabeth was just saying, you know, this doesn't necessarily produce that walkable, vibrant, you know, kind of town.
Janice, is that the 66 apartments?
Mm-hmm.
Is that the maximum density provided from the code?
That's based on 12 units per acre max.
So that would have to be affordable to get that density.
To get that density, she was going to ask you. So that's the maximum based on the affordability?
Correct.
Okay.
So, yeah, you know, the, we tried to do it as a, you know, and when we said, you know, it's probably 100 units as of right, we were including that bottom, bottom whole strip here as well. So 66 wasn't that far off from what we thought in the straight-up mathematical...
66, north of the highway, and then there was an additional...
Yeah, and then there was a whole, this whole thing south of the highway. We had always been working off of like around 101, we said, was the as-of-right in VB, and then we said we were adding about, you know, over time, the opportunity to 148, you know, so it was 248, remember? But that was, so 66 is actually a fair number when you lay it out, you know.
To get to 66 on the current zoning, does it have to be 100% affordable, or is that, that's just a bonus?
So you, no, it doesn't have to be 100% affordable. You can do, well, you would, it would still require some action, though. It's not 100. So as-of-right is still, these two and threes are, there's some action needed. So it's not just P in the code. It would be that senior citizen is a floating zone, so you could apply to land it. The major criteria for a floating zone, it's proximity to downtown. So if it's in downtown, I mean, it would be ridiculous to deny a floating zone to land it downtown when that was, that's its major criterias. And then scenario three, I'm sorry, just let me just say, is you could do an affordable housing overlay district, get up to 12 units an acre, but you can prescribe the ratios, the income limits, all the way up to 120%.
Okay. So I just want to be clear, because it's something you said, that we're looking at what the survey and the people that we had talked to, you had talked to back then, which may or may not agree to today, this isn't a declining, a decline in popularity or meeting that goal. So options two and three are, don't hold up to option one?
I would actually flip that essentially. I think the options, the three options that we've shown here in sequence, 1, 2, 3, are probably from, you know, least matching what we heard the community wanted to most. So like 3 is probably more in keeping with what the residents would want. You can see on 3, it's smaller buildings pulled to the street. The parking is internal to the block. And so I think that is, you know, making a better pedestrian experience along the existing street and along the park frontage by filling in some of those missing pieces, making a more engaging experience as you're walking along the street. Hopefully, you know, I mean, the parking's in the middle, so you might have that tension like you have at the King Cullen, you know, center right now with like the Starbucks and all those restaurants that front onto the street, but everybody uses the back door because that's where the parking is.
Okay, so with less words, this means that number three is probably the closest, not the opposite.
Three is probably the closest to what the residents, what we heard the community wanted, but we put them in that order because, one, with the current zoning, is what is most likely to be built.
Economically.
If what's possible.
From an economic development model, yeah.
Because it's a little, to me, it's a little confusing. I think people listening to this, they just want to get that very clear.
So it's three different as-of-right scenarios, or somewhat as-of-right, like the first one's more as-of-right than the rest, but the first one may involve a special exception as well. So there's some, you know, to be fair, but...
But in terms of highest and best use...
Highest and best use is sort of option one, which is this made massive retail center. Two and three are moderately and less feasible, only because is scenario three, is someone going to take that risk and build it? And that would be, you know, from what I'm hearing, that's a difficult thing, but that, you know, that remains to be seen.
I have a question about utilities.
But also, it also has seize of parking in there, so, you know.
In terms of as-of-right in utilities, water and electric, if any of these scenarios go in, the Hampton Bays Water District would be obligated to hook them up to water, right?
Yes.
It's a basic question, I know, but I've heard a lot about it, that, you know, what would happen to the water district. But as far as as-of-right, the Hampton Bays Water District would be required, even if it takes running a new main or something down the road, they would be required to do that?
There's not any need for a new main, but yes.
Right, okay, so it works.
The water availability is there.
Okay, good. And the same thing with electric, too, right? They would run new wires and put a phase three in whatever.
Everything as far as infrastructure, except for the STP, which in... Everything as far as infrastructure, except for the STP, which in these scenarios, they would have to put a private one in. These are private, you know, and there would not be the public option where other, you know, people on Main Street, which was what we were planning for, was a centralized STP that anybody could hook into and be able to get some revenue for their buildings, so they could fix them up and, you know, change them to be more...
Would they have to do an STP or some of these retail uses? I don't know what the flow is.
Yeah, we'd have to look at that. We didn't get that far. We're just doing like shapes on paper.
My density, and in this area, if you're talking about apartments, I can't see how else you can do that except possibly cluster systems, develop, it's out of our scope right now.
John, I was looking at scenario one, where it's just a large retail, and that it's possibly...
Well, that might be more, yeah, and do conventional, and that makes it even more likely that it's gonna happen.
Right, that's a big part of why we felt scenario one was a little likely scenario.
Well, you know, a large, you know, big box retail like that, probably not gonna generate a lot of flow.
Right.
Oh, not at your store. Whatever. Stores are different, but supermarkets, things like that, but you know, sort of stuff doesn't hold different. You really can't okein on it because you don't know what the mix might be.
I'm just saying, we don't, for the county, I don't think requires sewage treatment for I A for this type of...
That's correct. For option one, it would be conventional, like least sanitary systems, regular, you know, you'd have your drywalls in the parking lot, you have your conventional, you know, system.
Yeah, they have the lot area.
And they have the lot, they have the area, and that would be, that's why this is also more likely than the other ones, like we said. So, anyway, sorry.
But I just, I will add, that just not knowing what that commercialization might be under that, that could be subject to reviewing issue.
Yeah.
Thanks.
The idea was to get the, looking at the forms, like what are we even talking about? What are our options, right? You have to start, it can't just be like, you know...
And this would go to the planning board? They would put in their applications?
Well, like I said, the senior citizen zone would, is a floating zone that the town board lands, so someone could make application to you, and you could see your way to float, adding that floating zone if you wanted to. The criteria, the biggest criteria for that floating zone is its proximity to a downtown.
I appreciate the as-of-right evaluation.
Okay. So, we had kind of jumped ahead, you know, but the, in looking at these, the big question was, are these consistent with what we heard the public wanted? We talked about this a little bit. You know, again, I think those larger stores are not creating that vibrant, walkable scenario that we resoundingly heard was desired.
Those are flat roof, one-story buildings, probably modern-looking, like typical, like a Marshall's or TJ Maxx or that kind of thing.
Yeah, yep, so really not enhancing the existing character, I'd say. You know, so again, in thinking about, you know, why are those development options at odds, you know, looking back to what we had done in the data gathering phase, again, Hampton Bay is such a long block, there are not those intersections, there are fewer street buildings fronting on the street, you know, versus Sag Harbor or Greenport or Southampton. You can see the frequency of intersections, you know, creates more street frontage, so that there are more front doors, more windows on the street, it slows traffic. I think the streetscape as well, a lot of the images we were looking at, and you can see, you know, in some of these street trees, help to buffer, you know, parking. I think also, you know, obviously, the road width and just Montauk Highway creates some challenges, but introducing more intersections and more interest on the street helps slow traffic and make a more inviting scenario for pedestrians. And so, again, just, you know, looking at that raw data of there are some numbers, there are, you know, kind of analytic, analytical, quantifiable ways to evaluate this, and what is Hampton Bay's lacking that these other towns people pointed to have, and it's really that facade frequency, that block length is a huge factor right now. You know, I don't think many people are going to walk eleven hundred feet if there's not something exciting kind of pulling their attention down the street. So, that's really the challenge right now.
Well, that's, again, you're back on Main Street, and Main Street has a lot of issues with traffic.
Yes.
You know, crossing one side to the other, that's why, you know, the opportunity to maybe have another road that you could get off Main Street, put, park in a municipal lot or street parking, and then have a super walkable area leading into the park. So, the park is your draw.
Exactly.
You know, the attraction, maybe go into a concert in the park, and then you'll walk down the street, you'll walk to Main Street, you'll go to some of the Main Street shops and things like that as well.
And that's exactly how we had landed at the recommendations in the pattern, but previously of, you know, trying to create a street framework, aiming for that goal of about four hundred linear feet per block, you know? Having an intersection every four hundred feet is the goal, if we look at these other historic places.
Can I just interrupt one more time? Because that was, ended up being a problem. So, when, in the DOD, where this current section, that's already fully built out, started to get divided into these future quadrants, it led to all these crosswalks. And all that, all those crosswalks were slowing down traffic on the main highway, forcing us to mitigate with a bypass road that we were not able to create, that the community did not want that road, there really was very few opportunities to create that road without Parkland alienation and other issues. And so, the idea of walkability throughout this whole region is very challenging, whereas creating a pocket that's super walkable, you know, you could a little close off at night, and you could have it be, you know, just a hundred percent pedestrian kind of thing. That seems to be, people like that idea, but, you know, trying to redevelop the firehouse now, three of these pieces in this section, I don't know what their plans are, it's gonna be some new, I guess, firehouse in the future, you got the post office. I don't see a lot of this changing, yet that breaking up of this section into quadrants created, yeah, that created problems for us.
It really didn't, it was just that people were unwilling to appreciate that, like, people drive on roads and we sometimes need more roads, and planners plan for roads. So, it's like saying like, "I don't want that bypass road." Even if it was a one-way out, I know that's like, "Oh, Josh, you and your road," but like, honestly, it's so difficult to be like, "We don't wanna plan properly because somebody doesn't want a road," when it's like behind stores and no one would ever even see it, and it goes to a light. So, I can't help myself but see that, I'm sorry. But it really is just...
You had the parking behind, which was, no, we couldn't split the building, there's no access.
Well, you're creating a highway situation if you're only insulated on the inside, right? And then, people are still gonna fly by on Montauk Highway, and so, that's yours, who wants that? That's the other side of this. Going slow is a good thing. I was at Starbucks the other day, going in that, you know, you can't even open your door, your door will get ripped off, standing there. You know, people are going very fast, slow is not bad here, like it's not a bad thing to go slow.
It's a challenge, though, because it is both a bypass, it's a major highway, Montauk Highway, and we want it to be a Main Street. It's very hard to get it to be both of those things.
Right.
And I think that was a challenge in the original DOD, which really focused on keeping it like a Main Street, and it has to be some kind of combination of a highway and a Main Street. And that's, that's why I'm sort of looking toward other redevelopment areas where we could create more pedestrian experience. And I really believe that the future downtowns to survive really have to be vibrant, they have to be places where people interact, they have to be, you know, culturally, artistically interesting, you have to have those public spaces, the green areas, the amphitheaters, that, those kinds of things, bike lanes, you gotta be able to get out of your car and walk. And there's limited opportunities on Montauk Highway. And I think if you create that pedestrian-friendly area here, people still will walk on Montauk Highway, but trying to get to those quadrants, not gonna be an easy thing, and I can't figure out how we mitigate it if we have too much crossing of Montauk Highway by pedestrians, you know, unless you figure out overpasses and things like that.
Well, that would slow the traffic down, and hopefully, they would stay on twenty-seven and not drive through Hampton Bay.
Yeah, that's the other thing.
Unless they wanna go to the good restaurants.
You're fostering the ability to cut through by saying that...
Reality, there is a bypass already.
Not necessarily.
You have a failing situation, and you have to mitigate it, and that's the mitigation, we could look at different mitigation, roundabouts and things like that, but...
I like what you're saying, Jake, this isn't, you know, but I think slowing traffic down is...
Also, just calling it a bypass road, but, you know, I'm not tied to the road, but just the idea that it's just another, all these other roads that go throughout everywhere, we don't call those bypass roads.
There are other routes available.
There are other routes, so I think, you know...
But your point at the beginning, which I think is critical, as we dealt with this back then, was that you had this eleven-hundred-foot-long block where there was no access, so one of the ideas was to put the parking behind there, make that an attractive area for people to park and then walk, but there was no access through those buildings, and people started to think, "Well, we're gonna tear those building," you know, it became a little bit crazy that way, because I see this as, you know, when you look at these other really beautiful downtown areas, they evolved over a long period of time, and they evolved in a certain way, with certain factors. And I think you arrive at this with the same kind of evolution that takes time, but all I'm looking at is trying to make this, make this happen through how we zone and look into the future, so that the residents themselves, the owners, they will have the opportunity to evolve it the way they would like to.
Yes.
Failing that, you know, I'm kind of at a loss, but that was the intent originally.
You're exactly right, and I should say, throughout the four hundred, you know, foot number for the kind of ideal block, based on the towns we've been looking at, but obviously, that's the ideal, you know, we were not necessarily recommending a street every four hundred feet, you know, I think anything smaller than eleven hundred feet is better, is moving in the right direction, and I think you hit on it, that it's really about kind of encouraging that connection and circulation flow. Have the train station, you know, it's, it's a remarkable thing to have the train station that close to Main Street. You have the Good Ground Park, you know, which is this amazing resource for the community, that close to Main Street, but right now, there is no connection, you know, from Montauk Highway, there's no comfortable pedestrian connection, you know, to the train station. You can't really get from the train station to Good Ground Park easily as a pedestrian. It's tricky to navigate, you know, I think that was one of the overarching things, too.
You go down the Canoezeal Trail, it's actually a pretty walkway.
For parking lots.
The original idea of the traffic flowing down Montauk Highway, going to a business and then exiting onto Good Ground Road, I thought was a great idea. I think that, as people build, is the future, to get more traffic off Montauk Highway. To do the same thing, people to go to the park, I don't really consider the parking lot at Good Ground Park a road necessarily, with the speed bumps and everything going on, if there was a way to have some access to Squire Town Road, so essentially, you're never making a left-hand turn out of one of the businesses, crossing two lanes, because that slows everything down on Montauk Highway, and you'd have a clearer flow, but we would need some way other than this to get onto Squire Town Road. But I do, the cross-access here, I thought was a great idea.
And I think you're right that, you know, that at the park, that feels like a parking lot, has the speed bumps, doesn't feel like a road right now, but think how amazing that would be, you know, to have, to be able to sit at a table on the sidewalk, at a restaurant, you know, fronting the park, like that, I think that is, could really be a big draw if there was street frontage along that, you know, parking lot essentially right now.
Well, we did wanna create at least, you know, another way to enter or exit the park other than Squire Town. That was always sort of the plan. You know, it could be, you know, the new road here, could be a road at the cul-de-sac here, you know, there's other possibilities. I wanted to say too, that although we can't get this bypass road created, there may be an opportunity to get an extra eastbound lane to the light at Springville. I've looked at that, that may allow that traffic to get around downtown rather than the bypass road, just stay in the lane, that would take you, allow you to make that right.
So, Springville will have to be upgraded as well?
No, I don't think so.
It's two lanes.
No, you one lane turning out to Springville, but you would have a separate turning lane. You have a turning lane now, but it's, as you make the left after Macy's, you're forced into one lane, and then you get back into a right-turn lane. It would basically stay two lanes the whole way to Springville, Macy's.
We would need to coordinate with the county, because this, at this point, is, it would be up to them, and then you have your right-of-way issues, but yes, that's a good point.
You have two lanes in the other direction, but in the eastbound direction, you have one.
It makes me sad that that section of Montauk Highway between Springville and Macy's would turn into a four lane with a turning lane rather than having a bypass road.
In the back, one-on-one season?
Council on the Lobsteds would have told you how many accidents there were every week there at those locations.
I know, that's what, you know, we wanted, we wanted that access road to, you know, to give future options for the hamlet to develop.
Yeah, I can't figure out how to get there. Be honest with you, we've looked at it, we tried to create it, the community...
You just need to put it on for a referendum vote, you can, you can do it if you wanted to, but the, you know, we already have the right-of-way, but I'm not gonna worry about that. The real question is, these as-of-right scenarios, forgetting about that road for now, because, you know, we can create other ways in and out, is that, that's your starting point, really. So, you're listening to people, and people, "What do you want?", this and that, well, you have to recognize the possibilities and the rights that people who own the property may come in with. Now, that's not to say they wouldn't come to the planning board and we would say, "No, you gotta, you know, landbank this parking, or change this or that," and, but I think it's a good starting point, at least to understand what the options are, and, you know, it's not easy to get to the beautiful design, somebody's not going to put all this money into these facades and making it gorgeous and all this, you know. In option three, there's not much return, and I wish there was, maybe there is some other way, but like honestly, that's the truth of it.
No, I mean, you're exactly right, and that's, that's really, I think, what, hopefully, the takeaway is today, that the development that is allowed and is likely to happen today would really continue to push Main Street towards that highway character in, you know, the big-box stores, the parking lot, and, you know, would really tip it to being that highway and not the heart of a vibrant hamlet, is what we heard. I mean, that's, that's the big takeaway, and so, the question in front of all of you is, you know, what to do about that.
Just like, like you're saying, using Sable as an example, it's about a two or three-block area where Sable's, there's no parking lots, it's very...
Exactly.
And that's the prettiest part, but it's Montauk Highway, too. Yeah, but it's slow.
If we had scenario two, three, how many parking places do you want?
Yeah.
One eighty minus forty-six.
You know, you could see, it's, you know, they're very similar in form, and like you're saying, it is really that.
But it's just that, from here to here, it's very dense.
Four hundred parking spaces.
Four hundred parking, yeah, exactly.
And has no parking lots.
And like you're saying, it's a much smaller area than what we're...
Right, right, it's dense, it's, you know, it's very charming, the floors.
That's a long Montauk highway.
Yeah, yep, so this, this was actually a photo that we took when we were, you know, walking the site of, of Montauk Highway there.
So, the one question... Also, while we have the architects, excuse me, I'm sorry, we, you can ask them about that height situation, and the three and a half, and the thirty-five feet, like these are, this came from the patent book, and I think it's worth just talking about for a minute, as to what that was all about, just so you hear from the horse's mouth.
I just have, I just have one question. I know one of the issues with the original plan was segmentation and just looking at this part of the downtown in relation to the entire corridor, are we now looking at even less of an area?
No, 'cause we're gonna plug it back into the whole board.
The whole thing, okay.
Yeah, yeah, and also, just quickly, also, I gave you each this two-sided sheet. This was just sustainable development standards for what, for the Form-based code, but I would revise, if you're starting over again from scratch, you, anything you do should include, you know, this and maybe, you know, which also increased costs, by the way. So, these are all the things that we had wanted as far as sustainability goes as well, you know, creating solar and heat island reduction, water, you know, use, et cetera. So, I just wanted to point out that wherever you go, like we should include those sustainable design standards.
These pictures are great, I just wanted, just, can you tell me this, this one, this is downtown Hampton Bay's?
Yeah.
What year is this?
The, are you going to...
Judging by the cars, I'd say in the twenties.
We got that from the Historical Society, so I'd have to...
Yeah, we didn't write the year down.
And what is that tall structure that's in the center of it?
I don't know.
Yeah, clearly, it's not there anymore.
Church.
It looks like a church to me, too, but it's got a...
No, it has a name, it looks like a retail, it looks like a retail...
Well, maybe it's, maybe it's a...
At that corner.
Maybe it's a, maybe it's a light in the front.
I think it's a light, like, hanging down in the foreground.
Hanging from a wire.
Oh, it is, it is.
Oh, that's it.
Yeah, there's a car there.
There's a car there.
This is super.
And then this.
This is present with all the layer, some old.
So it's in this other old working.
It's amazing how many of these buildings are still there.
Yeah.
And that was a photo that we had taken, I think, in twenty seventeen.
That's seven one.
Yeah, on the opposite side of the street and we had just put a sepia tone.
So, but this, this building exists?
Thirty-five.
There's a little local bike shop there, where, where is this across from somewhere?
It used to be the bike shop, something else now.
It's something else now. Oh, so yeah, this, this is the, um.
She'll tell me that.
Yeah, all right, one's Orlando's and then this is next door to that, right, it may have been redeveloped.
This is fat dangos.
Fat dangos, exactly.
I like the diagonal parking.
So did you wanna just quickly touch on the height thing? Did we ever actually say four stories? No, isn't that true?
No, so we can include, so we looked back, you know, at the pattern book. We, um, so we were really, you know, working off of the existing zoning allows thirty-five foot height max, two stories. And so the, you know, the pattern book had proposed keeping that in much of the area. But, um, you can see, you know, so keeping that kind of one, you know, with the caveat that within that thirty-five foot max, you could potentially do two and a half stories, you know, if you had dormers and a roof. Technically, that would be two and a half stories. Um, so the lighter orange, you know, we're essentially proposing keeping that existing zoning. The darker orange that you see here in those areas, really fronting the park, a new street frontage, you know, potentially into the park, fronting the train station, those areas where, you know, it wasn't the current historic Main Street. It was fronting on a larger open space.
Excuse me, is that in this document? I can't, I can't see what you're pointing to.
This graphic is the pattern book.
I think I know what you're talking about, but.
Yeah, so she's trying to show this, that explain this.
Right, right.
Yeah, and so.
Pass it around, actually.
That was a diagram that showed where the different heights were allowed. So the darker orange in this diagram is where we were proposing that you could, um, keep that thirty-five foot height as the eve line, so of a cornice. But that we would allow, um, three to three and a half stories, that you could build another fifteen feet up if you stepped back behind the sightline from the street. So it's essentially keeping that consistent thirty-five foot height cornice line. But beyond kind of the, the vision, you know, the forty-five degree angle, you could do another half story beyond that is what we are proposing, but only in those select areas.
And you see that on the top view there.
What exactly is the definition of a half story?
Of the street frontage.
What does it mean, a half story?
The, I would have to look back at the building code, you know, there's a certain, um, ceiling height, really in, in practical terms. It's, you know, within a sloping roof, so it's not a full plate.
That's how it was described to us and it wasn't habitable from a certain point then.
It's not the full footprint, it's a partial, um, area of the building within a slope.
But it's usable as storage or is it habitable?
See, I mean, in resident, in our residential projects, you can make it habitable. It is a smaller area, you know, lower ceiling heights, but it could be habitable. And so that's what we were proposing, that you could have.
It's really a four-story, but it's set back.
Yeah, it's just a slope.
And so that was the key. And again, it was only in isolated areas, in the darker orange, and only up to sixty percent of the street frontage could be that tall.
One, you know, one of the things that I've heard at these listening sessions is, they, nobody seems to want a fourth story. And there's confusion about what a half story is, so, um, there's, a lot of people don't want three stories. They want a primarily one and two.
Yeah.
But, you know, there's some willingness to a, a, a little bit of a third story here and there if you have to, but they prefer not to.
Yeah.
The here and there was sixty feet, only you were permitted, you weren't permitted to do it anywhere.
I tried to explain that there are some three-story buildings in downtown Hampton Bays now. Not a lot of them, but there are some.
Yeah.
So it's not out of character to have an occasional three-story building.
But it's an aesthetic solution to add a little bit more space without the appearance.
Exactly, I mean, the, the appearance from the street would remain the same because we're keeping that thirty-five foot height limit for the eve line. Um, and so really, you know, somebody could build a thirty-five foot tall one-story or two-story building if they wanted, you know, right now. Um, so it's really not significantly different, it's just that allowing that step back. And, and part of that was really to, to give developers a little bit of incentive so that it was more economically attractive to develop these smaller parcels. You know, it's, it's really not economically feasible. If you have a small parcel, you can build a small one or two-story building, you're never gonna get your return out of that in our current model of financing. So that's, that's the challenge.
Right, we really do understand that. I mean, they could have a lovely plan that doesn't lead to any, anything because nobody's gonna invest if they feel like they're gonna lose money, you know. They, I think people want at least a reasonable shot. Everybody knows that there's risk when you invest and you might lose everything. You might have the storefront that sits empty, you might have an apartment that you can't rent. But, you know, most people want some reasonable expectation that they'll at least break even and maybe, you know, maybe see a return, you know, on their investment. Uh, I think the public understands that too, that, you know, economics sort of drives it. And nobody's investing based on current zoning and we, we need to understand why. Why aren't people investing? And if they did, cause, you know, sometimes rents go up over time, supply and demand. You know, you might start to see investment into downtown Hampton Bays. People don't like to just sit on property and pay property taxes. Eventually, they'll say, well, what can I do? What can I do, which is what you've laid out. And, you know, they're likely to do whatever is the most economically advantageous, which it sounds like would be the retail development. Some people would say, well, then at least we don't have the additional apartments, right?
Yeah.
But you would have a lot of traffic generation.
Yes, a lot of traffic generation, and like we said, it's gonna continue to erode kind of the character of downtown Hampton Bays into that highway.
You know, you'll, you know, that's, I think, one of the risks that Hampton Bays is vulnerable to lose its sense of place.
Yes.
That it will look like anywhere USA, you know.
I mean, that is the big.
Any sort of bypass highway type of, you know, like Jericho Turnpike, whatever.
That's the risk of doing nothing and not changing right now, is that you risk losing what is left.
You know, one of the things that draws people to the East End is the historic hamlet centers. Whether it's Bridgehampton or Amagansett, Tsai Harbor, Green Tor, you know. The old pattern of development created these really cool main streets. And the main street suffered during the mall era and the main streets were suffering during the Amazon era. But those that are sort of surviving are those that provide things for people to do.
Yeah, destination.
Yeah, exactly.
That have an experience, people wanna go downtown and walk around, you know, have a sandwich at a cafe somewhere or, um, you know, see a show somewhere, you know, whatever it might be, a performance. And I think that if it's gonna survive, you know, it has, it, it has to have that sort of critical mass. It has to have those attractions so that people do go downtown and spend money. And we're trying to find out in our survey, you should look at our survey, what people currently go downtown for? How often they go downtown? Sort of what are the unmet needs, what are the met needs? I mean, right now, there's a lot of, um, health and beauty type of places, like hair salons, nail salons. Seems to be quite a few, um, you know, there's the Seven-Eleven, the hardware store and sports stores and things like that. But there's a, not a great diversity of things. And so people then have to go elsewhere out of Hampton Bays, which creates traffic.
And they all know the big box stores.
Yeah, and if you're just having downtown the same things that you can get on Amazon without having to deal with the traffic and get them cheaper, that's not gonna bode well for the future. So, you know, I've been thinking a lot about downtown and how it services the community or will serve the community. And the community is diverse, it's really, there are different sectors. There's tourism, there's hotels now, there's second homes, there's year-round working people, um, retired people. There's a real diversity and trying to make downtown work for everybody, you know, I think that's, that's the challenge.
So historical, so next steps are that historical concepts are sort of taking your listening session information and we just want to sort of understand how that's getting, you know, sort of told, translated. You know, we're keeping notes at this meeting, I, you know.
Would be helpful to me, um, one is, you know, you've done some basic sort of massing of as-of-right zoning. What I'd like to see that develop more in terms of renderings with the parking, what that might feel like as you walk down Main Street, to see those, the shops that are likely to occur. And you could do the different scenarios and, you know, rather than just a rectangle, you know.
And that is our next step, to look at some more character drawings of that and then also look at.
People might like that and, and I've, you know, I've said over and over, if that, if you want what's, you'll get under current zoning, then our job is done.
Right.
But, you know, I was in a room of probably fifty people the other day and I asked that question directly, you know, do you want us to not focus on downtown and just leave things alone and let it evolve, you know, according to current zoning? And no one raised their hand. And then I asked the opposite, you know, do you want us to, you know, try to revitalize downtown? And, you know, it was everybody, everybody, you know. And I said, it may mean changing the zoning to, you know, try to attract investment and things like that, but it was overwhelming. Uh, every, every hand went up in the room, this was the Hampton Bays Beautification Association. So it seems like the community is saying, yes, there seems to be a question of what revitalization means and looks like. So yes, they want something to happen, but they're not exactly sure yet what that is. But we're getting there, I feel like we're getting to a consensus, then we just don't know if that's viable. So where I can, I feel like your skills could really be helpful is not only what currently on the current zoning, but also taking all of what the community wants now and sort of creating that.
Yeah.
Um, and then backing into what zoning would be then needed to allow that to happen. And then bringing sort of the property owners, and it's not just one person, there's numerous property owners, um, to the table and say, look, the community would like to create this new street to the park with, you know, some boutique shops and some real local shops and wide sidewalks and outdoor dining and things like that with plenty of parking. Are you interested? How do we work with you or, you know? And I, and I think there's some interest on some property owners and maybe on others are not. And so we have to deal with that too and say, okay, this could be phase one, phase two. Does the whole thing rest on everybody's participation? But really kind of nailing what that might look like to the point where the community goes, yeah, we would love that.
Yeah, we want that, yeah.
We want that, we like that.
So you wanted this or that type of thing?
Well, can I, can I add to that, cause I'm not sure I entirely agree with that. Because one of the things I think is important is that we tend to make a lot of assumptions. You know, how, how do people get there? So you have a great rendering and everything looks nice, but what are the obstacles? I would like to see some of the real obstacles, we're talking about zoning obstacles, I believe, but that. But physical obstacles that, that may be unforeseen. And I, you know, if you make an assumption that people are there, just have to also be sure that they are able to get there and, and are attracted by larger thing, like we're talking about Good Ground Park, it's one of the things you wanna go to. So holistic view of that, I think is important, helping for, at least from my standpoint, I'd like to be better informed that while we have a great dream, you need to make it a reality. And how do you do that and what are the obstacles to it? And which we discussed a lot of today, but there's a lot more to that. I think you, you get that here.
Yeah, well, I, you know, clear renderings, if people wanna, they really wanna know what it's gonna look like.
Yeah.
Not what it might look like, really, a very clear sense of not.
The only thing I caution is that, like, we don't have the budget to design something that nobody wants. So that's the only part about this that I caution you on because then they'll.
Figure out what people want and then.
So the one-story building, how much do you, detail do you really need on something like that? Like, it'll be, you know, franchise architecture most likely, we could try to dress it up, but for the most part, that's what it would look like.
Yeah, that's what I wanna say.
But then there may be a budgetary issue is all I'm saying, like, I just wanna understand, like, we wanna, we literally wanna draw out the as-of-right that you might not want, just to show people like this or that.
What, what programs do you use to do renderings? Cause I've been doing a lot in SketchUp.
Yeah, SketchUp, but we also do hand drawing.
We, so what? We were planning to do a hand drawing over SketchUp.
That would have a lot of work.
And that's fine.
But those industrial buildings.
I'm just saying, I, I really.
Well, the reason why I brought that up is because if you're trying to design what it could look like under current zoning and, you know, it's gonna be a standard retail building like a Marshall's or something like that, you could, you, you can get that off the gallery and just pop it in there and scale it. It's not a lot of time, somebody's already designed it.
Yeah.
It exists.
Yeah, no, I mean, to add one drawing, that's, that's fine. I think, you know, Janice is being considered here for us.
Well, I deal with the, right. Budgets, I'm sorry.
We don't put all our time into the.
Exactly.
I would rather use their time to like get to the part where everybody says, but this one is the, you know, we access the park, we have some good-looking buildings, it's at a scale everybody's comfortable with, let's design that versus, you know.
Janice, when you do that though, can, can we have some specifics on like the parking places? And if you say it's sixty-six apartments, are they one-bedroom, two-bedroom, four-bedroom? What's going on? Cause they're gonna wanna know about the density and how many people could be downtown, traffic, parking, the whole thing. So we need a lot of specifics.
Yeah, and I agree with that because that's what I was trying to talk about before, you said it better than I did. What, what are the obstacles to, to these things? A picture is nice and I, and I think it is important to have that, but we have to have the understanding of how attainable it is.
Well, I think too, people have the, people have the belief that, you know, current zoning exists and you're saying it could be that and they're saying it's been this forever, why is it gonna change? We don't want it to change. So if you don't change the zoning, nobody's gonna build that, cause nobody has built that. And we like it the way it is.
So, um, you know, Google Earth is helpful, they have some, what it looks like three D, you know, images of currently what's downtown. But I, in SketchUp, I've been recreating current conditions in downtown. So I have from Saint Rosalie's Church, um, to Good Ground Antiques on the north side of the road. I've done every one of those buildings. And on the south side of the road, from the hair salon at Pon Quoc, all the way down to the Seven-Eleven. I've done all those buildings, so.
If you wanna share that with us, that.
A hundred percent.
Yeah, that would be great.
A hundred percent, and I'm still going.
Do you wanna join, Jerry?
I think we had done a few buildings when we were there, but it sounds like you have more than we have.
SketchUp Pro too, I mean, you have all kinds of options. I mean, you could even bring it into, you know, VR and, you know.
Yeah, yeah, we've done that before.
Yeah.
And I think visuals, visualizing things are really important. I've been doing it to sort of see what is and, you know, then the community can play around with like, what would a second story look like on this building?
Yeah.
Or what if we put awnings on this building, that kind of thing. You know, but it also, as we talk about new development, how it would relate to what's currently there.
Yes, we did want, we did have a view shed of that, so you can see sort of the evolution side included in our contract, right?
Yes.
So they can see that.
So I think you need to put the supervisor under contract.
Save us some money.
This is what I do at night, guys. I'm up till like midnight.
And apparently, apparently, he writes songs.
I've actually been fun, it's been fun doing it.
SketchUp is a lot of fun.
I'm starting to take pictures of people's signs, like I got Skidmore's now.
Design me an window.
I've done your window. With all the stuff in it. And the Skidmore sign is on your building then, so. But you can do that in SketchUp, it's really incredible where you can take a picture and bring it in and place it and really, it's, they're not, you know, none of the models I'm doing are perfect, but they really, they feel, you get a feeling that it's, oh, like I know that building. Oh, yeah, that's Tony's Asian Fusion or, you know, that's the Douglas Ellman Building, whatever.
Well, I, I do, I use SketchUp for three D printing, so if you need, you know, if you wanna do a whole layout, that's.
That don't count.
When I'm done, I'll give it to John.
A little three D print, yeah.
Three D print a scale model out of the element.
That would kinda be fun, so instead of looking at these maps, you can look at a paper with all the little buildings.
Yeah, move the pieces around.
Yeah, we can move the pieces. Um, so historical, so they're gonna come back in like January after you've done your listening sessions?
And I think, you know, I think January is suitable, but I guess the, the question would be of, you know, we wanna make sure we're hearing all of this recent feedback you're gathering. So I guess that's the big question in my mind, I wanna make sure we're not doing this exercise prematurely before we hear that.
I'd like you to review the survey, cause we're going for not twelve hundred responses, we're going for thousands of responses. We want really everybody in Hampton Bays to participate. We're really gonna push it to try to get as much participation as possible so that we know that we have a broad, you know, you know, population and we have a, a general consensus of the population. So we've been working. So we've been working on a survey, but you know, none of us are sort of professional survey writers. So it would be good before we send it out that you guys look at it and make sure we're getting the information that we need to sort of make some of these decisions.
Yeah.
So, uh, we can get you a copy of it. Frank in my office has been working on it. We're gonna, starting, when we're finished, we're gonna work on a Spanish version of it. We're gonna do it online, but we're gonna mail it. We're gonna mail the QR code.
Great.
So anybody could just take a picture and on their iPhone, the, whatever, whatever phone they have, it'll, they'll be able to do the survey.
Great.
Really, it'll be, it's a fun survey and, um-
You offering prizes to them?
Well, we're expanding it now because now that we've moved it from a paper survey to an online survey, we, we think we can ask some of the questions about aesthetics and style. Um, we show some images. Originally, we weren't gonna have any imagery on it at all. But now I think we can have people react to images.
Mm-hmm. Great. Um, do you guys have set timing goals for the survey? When you're gonna release it and expect to close it?
Not really. Um, I'd like to get it out, you know, sometime in December, ideally. But, uh, if it went out in January or February, that would be okay too. I'd like to kinda keep things moving. So sooner, sooner.
And we, and we can review and provide feedback quickly. I was really only asking just cause I think it would be beneficial for us to wait to do these proposed kind of renderings until after we can see the results from that survey.
That's a good idea. And maybe you wanna put some of these imageries in the survey and be like, this is as of right on. What would you think of that? You know, so you can get some feedback on what they've shown you today in the survey if you wanted to.
From the data gathering, from the previous survey.
They look at that.
Sure.
Right.
Yeah, we have a whole series of stakeholder questions.
We can share too. Any of those are helpful.
We do, yeah, we do have that. So we have that.
You know, but, you know, and having your firm work sort of, if there is consensus on this opening up the park to Main Street and creating this road with the wide sidewalks and lots of landscaping, pedestrian-friendly, bike lanes and things like that, real walkable, park and walk, um, trying to figure out what that's gonna look like. I think it's really, you know, in, in, in great detail.
Yeah.
So people can really go, yeah, that would be a real asset and I love that. Or no, that doesn't fit Hampton Bay's or I'm concerned about one thing or another, you know? I think it's gonna take some, some work to get to that point. Though I do think there's a, people do want that. You know, there's an opportunity there.
Yeah. I mean, it sounds like what you're hearing now is very consistent with what we heard six years ago. I mean, there was-
Yeah, well, it's the scale of development. The concerns I'm hearing, they, on sewage treatment, there's a lot of, cause they want sewage treatment. They think it's good. They do not like the spot that we had considered by the cemetery. Um, and so they, they sort of, you know, they feel like there are better spots and they're concerned about smells, particularly if they're visiting their deceased loved ones. Um, it's not a spot that there's much support for and if any. And they're concerned about the number of units and who goes in those units, the housing units. Who they, who that serves, but you know, they're, you know, it's that density issue. They're concerned about traffic and they don't wanna make traffic worse. Um, you're concerned about gentrification. They don't, some people say, we don't wanna be Sag Harbor or we don't wanna be Southampton Village. We wanna be Hampton Bay's. They want sort of their own unique identity and not just a downtown that's gonna have, you know, three hundred dollar sweaters in boutique stores that they're never gonna go to. So they want it to serve, basically the downtown to serve all sectors of the population. Um, and they, they certainly, they'd love to see the diner remain a diner. They'd love to see the movie theater remain a movie theater. But they understand that that may not happen. So performing arts, you know, and culture, they want definitely a part of downtown. And the height is a big issue. People do not want four stories. Mostly they don't want three stories, one and two stories. Those are sort of consistent. And I know Cindy, you've been to some, and Rick, you've been to some, Tommy John, you've been. Um, am I missing something that you're hearing? Or is that pretty close to?
It's pretty accurate. Yeah, the elimination of the bypass road was, was so important. Definitely moving the STP. I think, uh, third, third story might not be out of the equation, but more of like a mixed-use variable heights of buildings and, you know, something that doesn't look like scenario one, two, or three. You know, it'd be nice.
You know, we have pretty extensive notes. Margaret Freelander attended three of them and took extremely detailed notes.
That would be helpful.
The fourth one, she didn't. And I just have handwritten notes. Um, but, uh-
But I think the first three were probably, you just heard it again at the fourth one.
We have had some, um, new people show up. You know, what I would do is basically allow, if you've already commented at those listening sessions, you, you had to wait until people who had not commented. So we got, um, we got, we did get some new voices, some younger people who, you know, were really concerned about whether they could stay in the community, whether they'd have to leave. They worried about that next generation and what their pathway was. A lot of people just like really, just they love Hampton Bay's, the environment, you know, the fishing, um, the pristine beaches, you know, lots of water, surfing, you know, the whole, you know, environmental. People talked about environmental tourism and things like that. But, uh, the environment and green spaces is really very important. So I think whatever we do has to sort of be in line with that vision as well.
Yeah, if you could share those notes, that would be great. Great, well-
Thank you.
Thank you.
And thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I know if anybody is interested in more reading, we did bring some-
I think we all think we have some of them.
We've got two copies of each of these that we can take with you of the, kind of our data gathering.
Was that the new one?
Um, so, no, so this is data gathering and the pattern book from before.
Can I take a pattern book? You know, I-
I'm good. I think I have it in my office.
I think, you know, unfortunately, we probably didn't do-
And they're online.
A good enough job explaining what it was that we had approved. And so, you know, the public sort of had some misconceptions about, um, you know, that we had allowed too much development. I don't know if any development would have actually happened, but that it was just too many units, it was too much to do.
Well, it was that no one would ever wanna do this again. So it was supposed to be over a length of time. And so I think that was the big disconnect there.
And I mean, that could be-
Pattern book was mostly style.
Yeah, I think people thought that it was just gonna be there.
Yeah. Stuff, form and style were the two most important things and it sort of shows, you know, what you want to have happen. Because what our boards get accused of is being arbitrary and capricious. And that means that it's just, I don't like it, so no. And someone comes back with something else and they go, no, not that either. And then they come back with something else and nah, we don't like that either. And at some point, you have to say what you do want in order for it to not be, you know, you're frustrating an applicant who's trying to propose something. So it's in our benefit to work with people and, and know upfront what we want. So we can tell them. That's really what we do.
But it also has to be economically feasible for them to do it.
Well, and that's the point. Cause a lot of, you know, while it's a good thing, your reef exceeds your graph. In this case, I don't think it does. Uh, I think you really have to stay focused, flat, and, and level about this without getting ahead.
I mean, you can say you want all the gingerbread on a, like, like, let me use Stop &amp; Shop, a real example. They were like, it was a million dollars extra to clad that building the way it looks today. You know, with all the trim and all the fixins and everything we did. And you don't even see it, but we did all that to get a nice-looking building. And, and that is, you know, you can't ask for like a diamond-crusted building or something and someone's gonna build. They wanna build something that's economically in their realm of, you know, their pro forma. So when you ask for all these extra goodies, that's where the trade-offs begin. And so, but we do want all the sustainability features a hundred percent, as I gave you that list. And, uh, the green spaces are very important, which we accounted for, and solar as well.
I think they want a certain level of certainty, you know, this time.
Well, that was the PDD and I wish it wasn't taken away because that's what we could have done in the first place. But you, you know, that's gone. But that was what the PDD was all about. What was the incentive? How much did you get? Were you doing? What were you getting in return? And, and all the certainty, we would lay it out and zone the whole thing.
Right, but the PDD was sort of developer-driven, whereas our process now is very community-driven. The community's gonna sort of tell us what they want. And then we'll have to figure out how to get them there. And, you know, I'm not sure what the zoning tool is. But first, let's get the community on the same page that this is what we want and, and then we'll, we'll figure that out.
Great. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you for your time.
So, so knowing that was gonna go longer than an hour, I asked for a half an hour that I don't need. And, and I, and I will couple my update with my presentation. So it's two for one.
Thank you, Historical Concepts.
Thank you.
Um, can we set up a meeting? Oh, you're, how long are you around town for? When do you go back to?
An hour.
No, they just came for this. They're going back.
When's the next time you're back, back out here?
We meet on Zoom. We can set it up. We can set it up.
We can meet on Zoom tunes.
Okay.
Yeah, no, we're happy to do that. And, you know, we have a lot of, a lot of residential projects going on. So I am out here, you know, probably every other week generally. So it's not hard to sort of do a person.
Okay, that's fine. If you could just talk to Jackie, who does my scheduling.
Thank you.
I'd like that. Okay, um, so we're moving on to the proposed Hometown Heroes banner program. And Councilwoman left the banner. It's all yours.
So you have what the proposed banners will look like. This is exactly what they would look like. Cause this is from the company that would be doing them. Um, we looked at several areas in the town to see where we could do this. And generally, these programs are done on Main Streets. But most of our Main Streets have been utilized by the beautification for hanging baskets and other things. So we thought a great area for this would actually be Good Ground Park. Because it has a great number of the light poles around the entire parking area. You would see these, you would see the faces as you drive through the park, through the, through the parking area. Um, we would have a website set up on the town that would take you to the site where you order the banner. You would order the banner and it would prompt you to go to a site run by the VFW. And the VFW is processing all the payments for these. So it will also raise money for veterans programming through the VFW. Um-
So these would have, sort of, hang on the-
On the light posts.
On the light posts.
Yeah, there's brackets. So that'd be the only cost of the town would be the brackets to hang these on.
And would there be lots of these or just like in one location?
We're doing all the light posts on Good Ground Park and around Good Ground Park. So it'd be about thirty banners.
But these aren't permanent. They change.
They're not permanent. They would go up on Memorial Day and they would come down on Veterans Day after Veterans Day. And then they, the banners would be given to the family that purchased them.
So would they, would they all be the same or?
They'd all be the same, but with a different person. And it would be-
Oh, that's what I'm asking.
Yes, it would be their photo, it would be their name, where they served, if they served in a war and any honors they got. But we are not putting rank on these and that was by request of the veterans because rank shouldn't matter who served.
So these would be hanging between veterans and Memorial Day?
Between Memorial Day and Veterans Day.
And they get weathered pretty-
There, it's a vinyl banner. It's very weather resistant.
Great. I, I like it. I guess.
They, they all, every, all live it? Or are we not?
No, this is, they, the only requirement is that they be a present or past member of the town of Southampton and that they be honorably discharged or actively serving.
I'm just saying, so deceased or only those who are-
It could be, it could be your son who's currently serving in the military and you wanna honor him.
Okay, so we're not, we're not doing, um, veterans who've passed away.
No, no, it's not. Yes.
In the community. That's what I'm saying.
So these are, you couldn't do a memo, uh, in memory of somebody?
Yes, yes. They have, they have to have been honorably discharged or actively serving.
Remember they are all armed services, honorably discharged.
But they, they don't have to be currently alive?
No.
Okay, that's what I was trying to add.
No, not at all.
But that may get confusing, cause if you, if you think that these are all people who have passed away, then say, whoa, that guy, I know that guy.
My feeling is the majority are going to be those wanting to, cause on the bottom it says proudly honored by and then it would have the family's name or the sponsor's name down there. So my feeling is this would more than likely mostly be people honoring lost, lost loved ones. Or, I mean, like I said, it could be a parent whose son is currently serving overseas or daughter and-
So the VFW is, is bearing the cost of that week. The town would bear the cost of the brackets.
About six hundred and fifty dollars.
Uh, in Good Ground Park is it gonna constantly change that? So that's a one-time cost.
One-time cost.
So-
The only feedback I've gotten on this is that people want us to expand outside of the park. I said, let's start in the park.
Start with this and tell us, but how would we, how are we helping the VFW?
The cost of the banner is increased. It's, uh, they're gonna pay two hundred dollars for each banner. I believe the cost with shipping and everything is about a hundred and twenty-five dollars. And then the veteran was gonna use, the veteran, the VFW is gonna use that money for veterans programming, the extra seventy-five dollars. And also to help those who want to honor a loved one but couldn't bear the cost.
So where's that, that's where I was thinking.
Yeah, the difference between buying the banner and what people are paying for is there.
The people are, the people are paying the VFW two hundred dollars.
Okay, so-
And then they're writing a check to the company for the banners.
Okay, and then they could do fundraising around that?
Yes.
As a way of raising more funds for-
And there will be also a donation if you wanna go on and donate additional.
Is the VFW putting them up?
No, Parks is gonna put them up.
So Thomas Bradford, we buy one, the Martell family buys one for Thomas Bradford. It's up for two thousand twenty-three. It comes down, you give it to us. So the first, say there's forty polls, the first forty people that go online and buy them will be twenty-twenty-three.
Yep.
The next forty people will be twenty-twenty-four and so on. Okay.
And if there are more than forty requests, how is that?
They'll go on a waitlist for next year.
And, and who decides?
It's first come, first served. As soon as your money is, your payment, you watered and your payment is in, you're, you're-
And, and who's gonna administer?
Jamie Bowden is.
Okay, so there is, there's Parks, there is, we are administering this.
There'll be, yeah, but I mean, we're not, we're not taking any of the money for it.
No, I get it.
Who designed this?
That's the banner company. Historical, I think it's-
Cause I, I saw this in Ronkonkoma.
There are other towns are doing this, yes.
What other towns on the East End are doing this?
Um, I know the town of Huntington has one. And ours is kind of modeled after theirs. I know East Hampton just did one, but East Hampton did it, the town is doing it on Main Street and they're just putting the names of all of the East Hampton veterans.
It's on Main Street.
Yeah.
For the different wars.
Yeah.
They have a list of names.
Mm-hmm.
Actually saw Greenport, I think did it for their graduating seniors.
They did.
They did that for the prom, for the graduating seniors, yeah.
Right, this is what it reminds me of, the schools.
Yeah, yeah.
It was just the park was, we thought a nice place because when you drive through, it's, they're all facing you and it's a nice, there's actually a lot of light poles in Good Ground Park, so.
I've seen a lot of the upstate towns have done it too, over by Seneca Lake.
Very nice idea.
It's great.
How big are the banners? I, I've seen some old banners.
They are-
A little bit bigger than the poster here, so.
They are eighteen by thirty-six.
So they're foldable banners in heavy vinyl or they're rolled up?
Yeah.
Okay, so then they're delivered?
In rolls. Yeah, and then they'll be delivered here and then Parks will put them up. And then Jamie will take them back and families can pick them up after the program ends.
That's good. I'm, I'm in.
Can, uh, different groups sponsor, uh, the, I, I imagine the answer is yes. So I, I think a nice idea would be for various groups to sponsor, uh, things like this for their members. I, I know, uh, we have a number of veterans who have served as firefighters and ambulance corps. And, you know, some of those groups may wanna do that. That is, that is available as well. Um, we've had people fight in every war that the United States has ever been involved in going back to the revolution. So that, that could dig in up-
I mean, I know there's gonna be far more demand than we have space for and it's, you know, gonna take a while to get through the list, but-
So is it current and/or few, uh, current Southampton residents or is it?
You had to, you had to currently live or had lived in the town of Southampton.
At some point.
Yes. And there was a question on that, but the name of the program is Hometown Heroes, so.
Yeah, okay. But, you know, a hometown hero forty years ago is still a hometown hero.
Still hometown, you can live in Florida now, but you, you lived here, you can still be honored.
I mean, it would be nice if there's something that distinguished those from the, that, you know, have passed, like in memory of, you know, versus those who are living. Cause you're gonna get a mix of people. Cause you're gonna get a mix of people who are alive and people who are not alive. Maybe just somewhere in the life of the town honors, you know, in memory, blah, blah, blah.
You can definitely ask, but we look into it.
Somewhere on it. You know, or, or, you know, like this says the year served, it could have, I don't know, is this individual a community member?
No, this was just a sample from the, from the company.
Okay. So like, I wouldn't know whether this person is still in the community or not, so it might, it just might help.
Ninety-fourty-one to forty-five, I might give you a clue.
The CBF, yeah.
Anyway, it's just, it's just a thought.
Okay.
Because, you know, because, and this is what it's gonna say on the back?
Yes.
For all of our veterans and active duty military, thank you. It, it just makes me feel like the person is still a veteran, alive, yeah.
Okay.
And if they're not, maybe it's just something in memory.
Above the name or something, yeah.
Yeah, it could just go right here.
You know?
In memory of-
Or you can just put in memory of proudly honored by and then the person's and the family's name.
Yeah.
Or the group's name.
Well, you could overprint it as a flag at the top, in memory of, if it's a deceased. Yeah. That might work, something like that.
Yeah.
That's large, then it's clear from a distance, cause they're gonna be hung pretty high.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Is there any other criteria besides military service?
No. Just that you're active or honorably discharged.
Okay.
Tell them something that honors the memory of, yeah, and then there's lots of ways you could do it. Alright, um, alright. So, so what do you need from us? We're, we're all good, you all like it.
No, I had the, I just had the, that's why I tabled the resolution yesterday to buy the brackets.
Okay.
So that's the only thing really we need to do.
Okay. Alright, so, um- And, and where was, it's gonna be funded out of community housing.
Yes.
And how much money do you need?
Like six hundred and fifty dollars. I think she was doing it for, the resolution is for an amount not to exceed eight hundred dollars.
That's fair. It's a very nice thing. Alright, uh-
I didn't hear.
Amount not to exceed eight hundred dollars.
Total?
For, for the, the one who didn't buy the brackets.
It's for the brackets. And the, and then the brackets-
The banners are paid for by the person.
No, no, I get it, I get it. Eight hundred seems a lot.
But the brackets can stay, so next year-
They're, yeah, and they can be used for other things too.
Yeah.
Outside of the season, so.
So there's some kind of, some kind of ring that goes on, there's a connector ring for these are these, the-
There already actually are some in Good Ground Park and they actually just zip tied them on so that they don't damage, they have like industrial strength zip ties, they don't damage the light posts.
Alright, so they're not rolled at the top and then slide over?
No, I think they are.
Yeah, no, they have, they have, they have like a, and they slide on and then they have caps or something.
It's just cheaper and quicker to put up. So I was just thinking about that, that cost.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, so in terms of updates, so the, the listening sessions are now focus groups. We mentioned that. You can sign up. You guys are invited to, to come. Just let me know so I know that there's not gonna be a quarrel.
We should probably go ahead and notice them so we can, if three of us come, it's not a problem.
Then we need Sunday.
We, we notice them as a workshop.
Yeah, I, I, I don't know. I mean, I think you could sit in the room and not participate if you wanted to.
I think it's a community event.
That's not my understanding of what we need to do. As long as you're not doing business, I think it's okay. You're, you're not debating some of these before the board?
No.
I wouldn't wanna be in Hampton Bays and not be able to come in if I had an hour, you know, and didn't, and didn't sign up, you know?
There's, there's so many of these. So November tenth, the seventeenth, the eighth and the fifteenth, there's three one-hour slots.
I know what you're saying, you don't wanna have to pre-register.
Yeah, let's all like to listen. I mean, come on, we're council people.
Chances are if you show up, you're not, this is gonna be me and the group.
Yeah.
Chances are.
Well, that was a for instance.
The band is about to tap.
So I think, I think if we notice them, we're okay.
I don't know how to wanna notice them.
Good news Frank, we're, we're changing the survey.
Now I've gotta have the clerk, I gotta see TV, I get some phone. You know, no, Frank, changes the whole thing. I gotta have a video camera. Um, it just changes the whole dynamic.
Alright. What is it?
To me, it's no different than going to the, to the veterans ceremony.
Who's hosting it?
Right, exactly.
Okay.
Who's hosting it?
Just show up.
Jay.
You guys can take turns. No, I thought you'd come in and it was an opportunity. So, so go in.
I guess that's the point.
Sitting in the back of the room, you don't have to, you're not sitting up in a dais and you're commenting and running-
You have to be out of here by noon today, just, just letting it out.
Oh, oh no, we're getting kicked, we're getting the hook.
That's why I asked you for a half an hour that I didn't need.
Okay.
Alright, continuing on. So again, so there's, the, the, the next four Thursdays, starting today, and there's three slots of four to five, five to six, six to seven, ten people max. And, um, you sign up online. If you go to the town's website, you'll see the focus group meetings. Um, or if you see one of these posters and you go to the QR code, it'll get you right to the sign up. And, uh, how's signing up going?
Uh, today's session's two are full, one is, has three people.
Ooh, is that the last one?
No, the first and last one are full.
Oh, okay.
First one and last one are full, the middle one has three people?
Three people at the moment.
So you can take them to Francesca's?
So they can still sign up for the middle?
Yes.
And are people signing up for the other dates as well?
Yes, they are. But they're all, have open slots at the moment, all the remaining. But we have four, five every slot, I just-
Well, yeah. Yes, I don't, doesn't have to, if I have one person or two people, it's a conversation about the future of Hampton Bays and talking about some of these ideas and getting a, you know, people have great ideas. They really do. And, um, and it's really sort of interesting to hear different people's perspective on what the future should look like. And what the concerns are and the aspirations. It's, it's been really, I think, a great process. So, um, alright, so that's that up until December fifteenth. And, and then we'll take it from there. If, Frank, in terms of the survey, um, and we'd like to share the survey with-
This is a comfortable chair.
We'd like to share the survey with Historical Concepts, just to get their input too, because they're helping with renderings. Um, I asked them to contact you.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, we're, we've been talking about adding some visuals to it.
Yes, I sent a copy around twice, I think, uh, to the board members and I think-
I haven't seen a new one that has any visuals.
Yes, the last two copies of it had visuals in it.
Okay, okay, I haven't seen that. And what the, what were the questions associated?
Same questions were the same, uh, that we talked about at our last meeting. And the visuals were as they were originally, where you would just state your preference from a set of images. Um, like, dislike or undecided, I can't remember what the options were, but you would look at facade, streetscape and setback images of various Main Streets. And people would choose from a set of images which they preferred. And there were, I think, totally maybe a dozen or fourteen images arranged in pairs.
Alright, so I, I need to take a look at it, cause sometimes it gets confusing in terms of the variables. So somebody may, you know, like, maybe there's power lines and they're having a negative feeling about the power lines, but they like the building. Or it's the wide sidewalks that they like, but they don't like the number of stories.
I could print out a copy for you.
So I just would like to look at-
These are all images that were, if you remember, when we first created the survey, there were a bunch of images, some of which you added. I just reused all of those images.
Okay. I, I still would like to take a look at that.
Yeah, sure.
And in terms of the online survey, are you doing it with, you, you click? The, how does it, with, with a mouse? You click the yes, no, unsure?
Yes.
Or is it a drop-down edit?
No, you, you, you make choices from the options available using your mouse, or if it's a touchscreen, you can use your finger.
Okay.
CRC is preparing the survey right now. And once it's completed, then we will translate it into Spanish before we release it. Uh, but I'll print out a copy for you so you can look at the images.
Right.
If we have to, replacing the images is easier than replacing the text.
Can I get a, like a beta version? Did I get, and look at it online as well?
Well, it's, it, it's a long way from being completed online. They just, the women in the office downstairs only got a copy of it.
Well, that's fine.
Um, earlier this week, so it's taking some time.
Okay. I appreciate that. And I, I know it's gonna take some time. I wanna make sure it's user-friendly and we're not getting-
It's a cumbersome survey.
And, you know, with the images in particular that were, you know, we're not getting false reads, sort of, you know? If, if it's a facade, we're trying to get an understanding of whether they like that look. And they're responding to, you know, the, the traffic in front of it.
Mm-hmm.
That's making them feel negative.
Again, I'll print out a copy, be with your other material on your desk inside.
Alright. So other than that, um, I, I won't say anything really about the budget. We've passed the budget and I appreciate all the work you guys did on the budget. There's a winter coat drive. Frank, stick around if you have other updates you wanna provide, but, uh, there's a winter coat drive. This is from November fourteenth through February tenth of next year. You can drop new or gently worn items at, uh, a bunch of different locations, including the Southampton Town Police Headquarters, Quad Village Police Department, Stony Brook, Southampton Hospital, West Hampton Beach Police Department. Um, any unwanted winter coats, hats, gloves, scarves, um, that, you know, obviously we're getting these to people in need. So if you have extra coats or scarves or gloves, please, uh, please donate them. We could probably add locations if we, I see we're not using Town Hall as a location?
We'll probably get one here.
Okay.
Um, we had one here last winter.
Okay, so maybe we'll try to get one here as well. Frank, did you have any updates? I, I know we've purchased the building in Hampton Bays or sort of the west end of Hampton Bays, the new building. We closed on that. I think I've already updated the board. We're working with the town engineer on, um-
Whatever renovations are needed.
You're gonna have to come forward. Um, I know the trustees are, have looked at the building and shared some of their needs. I know Councilwoman McNamara is working on this as well.
Yeah.
They're looking for a little more space in that building than they had initially.
Yeah, I just met with Kara Back and with Tom about some of the refinements of needs that they may have. And what can be done, if anything, with the currently unconditioned space on the second floor. Uh, there's an unfinished attic portion which could be useful. Uh, Tom is going to evaluate what it might require of the town in terms of cost and operations to make that portion of the building useful.
Right. Uh, in terms of the, uh, blinking light program, I have not gotten the analysis yet. I do not know, um-